I don't see anyone. Um, staff, do we have any reports this morning?
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Megan Harrington, Planning Director. I do not have any updates for you this morning. Mr. Kilgore, do you have anything for the Commissioners?
Uh, nothing for the Commissioners as a whole, but, uh, Mr. Chair, would you check your mic?
I, uh, I'm now, I think.
Awesome. Thank you, sir.
Great. All right, we're all set there. We'll, uh, move ahead to approval of the minutes from our last meeting. Anyone have any comments or changes to that? We'll deem those approved. Um, move on to our first item, consent item, Agenda Item 3B, File Number MS-238, Minor Subdivision, Renahan Ranch, Final Plat. Anybody like to see that pulled as a regular item? All right, I'll entertain a motion. Ms. Fuller?
Mr. Chair, with regards to Agenda Item 3B, File MS-238, A Minor Subdivision, Wretchen Ranch, Final Plat, I move for approval in accordance with the attached resolution with five conditions, five notations, one waiver, and a recommendation of finding of sufficiency with regard to water quality, quantity, and dependability, and that this item be forwarded to the Board of County Commissioners for their consideration. Second.
Jack, second. Thank you. Any other discussion? Take the vote. Mr. Markwich?
Aye.
Mr. Trowbridge?
Aye.
Ms. Fuller?
Aye.
Ms. Jack?
Aye.
Mr. Whitney?
Aye.
Mr. Byers?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. It passes unanimously. Uh, moving on to Agenda Item 3C, File Number MS-242, Final Plat, Mary Jane, Minor Subdivision. Anyone have any questions or comments or want to pull that as make it a regular item today? Sir Whitney?
I just have a question, perhaps of staff, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Um, I, I, it looks like this came to us and maybe timing fixed it, but it looks like it came to us as a, uh, a rezoned request and a minor subdivision. I thought it was already rezoned and the final proposed resolution speaks only to the minor subdivision, so just for clarification purposes, can we figure out what we're doing?
Hi, good morning, Planning Commission. My name is Joseph Letke. I'm the Planner/Project Manager for this item. Mr. Whitney, this was rezoned last year, um, so this application is just for the final plats to create the four lots.
The introductory material says it came from... Oh, my God.
Any other questions for staff?
Mr. Chair, Justin Kilgore, um, could I get Mr. Whitney to repeat or summarize what he said in the mic so it captures it for the record, sir?
Right.
However inaccurate it was, I'm glad to do that. So, when I initially read this, I don't know what I was doing, but I initially read it as being an application for a rezon and approval of a minor subdivision, and as I went through the material, it said it had been rezoned before, so I couldn't figure out why it was asking for both, at least I thought it was, and then the resolution is for the minor subdivision only, which is fine with me, I was just trying to get it squared away in my own head. Thanks.
All right, we're all on the record. I will entertain a motion. Anyone? Ms. Fuller, again?
Mr. Chair, with regards, agenda to Agenda Item 3C, File MS-242, A Final Plat for Mary Jane, Minor Subdivision, I move for approval within, in accordance with the attached resolution with six conditions, five notations, one waiver, and a recommendation for a finding of sufficiency with regard to water quality, quantity, and dependability, and that this item be forwarded to the Board of County Commissioners for their consideration.
Second.
I was just gonna say, the least I could do is second, but I'll refer to whoever has seconded it.
That's it. Are you, you, we're gonna take that as a second, Mr. Whitney, okay? Just to make everyone feel good.
Good deal.
All right, uh, voting. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Byers?
Aye.
Mr. Whitney?
Aye.
Ms. Jack?
Aye.
Ms. Fuller?
Aye.
Mr. Trowbridge?
Aye.
Mr. Markwich?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. It passes unanimously. Next, Consent Item, Agenda Item Number 3D, File Number SF-2419, Final Plat, Neck Subdivision. Anyone have questions on that for staff or want to hear that as a regular item?
I have one question.
Yes, Ms. Fuller.
Um, so, I, I, is that one acre lot, is that, that was like, kinda grandfathered in, had been done a long time ago, and that's why we have what we have? I've just never seen that.
Uh, Ryan Hauser, Planning Community Development. Uh, the short answer is yes. Uh, the Board of Adjustment had a hearing, I think it was last year, to basically legalize the one acre lot.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Trowbridge.
Oh, go away.
Not so fast.
I, I did, I also kinda had one question, but it wasn't about the one acre lot, it was about the drainage. Um, I was just a little concerned, there's a, there's a, the creek, Black Scroll Creek is along the southern edge of the property, I'm just wondering, uh, and there seemed to be some back and forth, uh, in some emails that were in the, in the record, so could we talk a little bit about the drainage and what that was about?
We'll have the engineer.
Okay, that's, that's all right. Thank you.
I, Joe Hansstrom, Department of Public Works. I was the engineer on this project. So, yeah, we did have the, um, consulting engineer on this analyze the Black Scroll Creek there, and the creek was deemed stable from the calculations and from photos of the creek, and so the, the minimal increase, um, in the flows to the creek, um, because of the impermeaseness, um, wasn't deemed to have a negative impact on the creek.
Okay, so no retention or detention, uh, structures are needed to help control any downstream flows?
Uh, no, that wasn't deemed necessary.
Okay, that was what, that was kinda where I was going.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thanks. Any other comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Trowbridge.
I didn't, I didn't want Ms. Fuller to have to go again.
Yeah, she's getting, she's getting dry throat.
As regards to Agenda Item 3D, File Number SF-2419, The Final Plat for the Connect Subdivision, I move that we recommend approval in accordance with the attached resolution with five conditions, four notations, two waivers, and a finding of sufficiency with regard to water quality, quantity, and dependability, and that this item be forwarded to the Board of County Commissioners for their consideration.
Thank you. Second.
Second.
Who was that? Mr. Smith. All right, thank you. I'll take the vote. Mr. Markwich?
Aye.
Trowbridge?
Aye.
Ms. Fuller?
Aye.
Ms. Jack?
Aye.
Mr. Whitney?
Aye.
Mr. Byers?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Chair votes ayes, and that item passes unanimously. All right, moving on to...
Uh, Mr. Chair, apologies for interrupting. Erica Keach, on behalf of the County Attorney's Office, before we proceed with the regular items, can we take a brief recess?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Five, give us five.
We will call the meeting back to order.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
To avoid the perception of conflict of interest, I am going to have to recuse myself on this item.
All right.
And I'm leaving the room.
Which evidently is a requirement. It's not that she's mad. Thank you. Thank you. But the record shows that Ms. Jack has left the room. All righty, we'll proceed to our regular item, item number five A. File number SKP 236, sketch plan, Mayberry. I sure hope there's somebody named Andy that's gonna come up and talk.
Yeah, me too. Barney.
Okay. So this project is for file number SKP 236 for the Mayberry Sketch Plan. Again, for the record, my name is Ryan Hauser. I'm a planner with El Paso County Planning and Community Development. With Engineering Department of Public Works, we have Daniel Torres. Just a quick note, if anyone's watching remotely and have not provided a name and phone number, please email that information to PCDhearings@elpassoco.com. This is just a brief overview of the request. It's for a 630-acre sketch plan. Predominantly residential uses, about 383 acres. About 53, 54 acres of commercial uses. Some civic public uses and parks, open space, drainage trails. And roads and public rights of way. The full buildout contemplates a maximum potential 2,800 dwelling units, maximum potential gross density of 4.4 units per acre. With more pockets of higher density and lower density areas, as you'll see on the sketch plan drawing. And about 15 acres of commercial development. Property is currently zoned PUD, CS, and A35, and it's located on the south side of Highway 94. I'm gonna move forward for just a second because I think this map gives us a little bit more context than some of the other drawings. Maybe not enough if you're not familiar with the east side of the county, but this property boundary line is about 10 miles east of the boundary line for the city of Colorado Springs municipal boundary. So it's out by Ellicott. This is the drawing of the proposed sketch plan, so you can see the relationship that the proposed uses have to each other. They use a similar color scheme to what we would normally have in our zoning districts, so the lighter yellow colors represent a lower density, the darker yellow colors represent a higher density, the red obviously being commercial, and the green, public, open space, parks, and things of that nature. I do want to clarify. All of the density that is proposed in the sketch plan is what we would consider urban level density, so when I say low density, it's relative to the rest of the plan. You can't really see the details on this page, it's a little blurry, so I do apologize for that. But what they've identified as the LD, low-density residential for single-family products, contemplates a maximum density of eight units per acre, and then it kind of goes up from there in the higher-density areas. But as you may remember from when I was describing the general details of the plan, the gross density is proposed to be much lower than that because of the amount of open space and commercial uses and non-residential uses. So while the areas do contemplate a higher net density in those areas spread out over the entire sketch plan, the density is a little bit less than that when we add in the non-residential and the open space areas. This is the criteria of approval for a sketch plan. I won't dwell on this slide, but we can go back to it as necessary or as needed. I added a lot of history onto this slide. A lot of this information is also present in the staff report. This is more just a distilled summary of the history of this project, since it kind of has gone through multiple iterations over the years, and it is a relatively long history associated with this project. The original Viewpoint Village subdivision PUD plan was what originally established the idea of what eventually became what you see before you today. That was established back in March of 2002. And the overall total number of houses contemplated was roughly the same as what we're seeing today. It was about 2,500 total residential units. It was a little bit more uniform in design, so whereas the Mayberry Sketch Plan has more contemplations of pocket parks and areas of non-residential kind of scattered out throughout a little bit more, the original plan had more of a civic center commercial node up here towards the New Log Road and Highway 94 intersection, and then the rest of the plan was contemplating just residential uses. These other entitlement permits that you see listed here were more just intended to facilitate that original PUD plan. The Ellicott Town Center Sketch Plan pretty much says the same thing that the original PUD had. It was like a little bit more specific, updating things to when the county started using sketch plans as opposed to conceptual PUD plans. And that was proliferated through the Ellicott Town Center PUD, which was a zoning conceptual plan for the entire property that you see outlined in pink. And more site-specific for the area that wound up being what they had designated as Phase One in the Phase One Preliminary Plan, which was adopted in 2006. And then ultimately the final plat, which was adopted, approved in 2019. So there was a bit of a lag there, but then it kind of, project got revived and the Phase One Final Plat was developed under the original contemplation from the original preliminary plan from 2005. There were some minor changes that were made to the Phase One proposal, and that's what resulted in the Phase One Combined Preliminary Plan, PUD Development Plan, that some of you all may remember from a few years ago. That was approved by the board on April 5th, and then the Phase filing three Final Plat completed the Phase One of development, and that was approved in November of 2023. Filings two and four are the commercial components that you can kind of see here in red. Those have already kind of completed their entitlement process, and we'll be recording the filing for Final Plat, actually today after this hearing. And then the purpose of this sketch plan is to implement the following phases for the rest of the development. They've added some extra land here. They've acquired some more land on the eastern side of this property that's currently zoned A35 that eventually would be proposed to rezone to a site-specific PUD to continue to facilitate the development. So the main idea was to sort of amend and replace all of the previous existing proposals, clean everything up, since we have multiple sketch plans, multiple PUD plans that kind of don't really communicate with what the new development pattern and the new more modernized proposals are for this project. So sorry to be a little long-winded there, but I feel like it's a little important to understand kind of how we got from the start to where we are today. With regards to the master plan, the two maps shown here up in the top right, you have the place type map, and then in the center, the area of change map. Staff has determined that the proposal is consistent with the place type and the area of change, place type being suburban residential, which contemplates a similar level of density that's being proposed with the sketch plan, and the area of change identified as new development, which could contemplate a significant change in character for the area, which the sketch plan would create a significant change in character for the area at full buildout. So staff has determined that it is consistent with the land use elements of the master plan. I did want to continue fostering a good relationship between the county and Shreve River Space Force Base, so while this property is outside the buffer area, we still provided notice to them and allowed them an opportunity to comment on the proposal, and they didn't have any issues with it. So in still trying to be consistent with the master plan in terms of having a good relationship with the military institutions.
While you're on that, the end of the last slide there showed is Shreve looking for residential development in that area to help house?
They didn't really provide any comments on this particular plan. We do have some other proposals that aren't really officially ready to come before you yet, that might provide more housing a little bit closer to the base.
What's that Shreve River Air Force Base Suburban Residential Priority Development Area? Is that, what is that? The last sentence of the third bullet there?
Oh, it's because it is, it's not in the two-mile buffer area, but it is located in the, one of the suburban residential priority development areas for the master plan. I think they just named it the Shreve Priority Development Area because that's in the vicinity. It doesn't have much to do with Shreve, but the idea is that we would contemplate this area as a priority for suburban-level development in order to help support the base.
Yeah, that's what I thought. All right. I didn't know if there was a formal thing. Thanks.
No. Sure. So at this point, if you don't have any more questions for me at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Daniel for the drainage and transportation components.
Thanks.
Daniel Torres with Department of Public Works. In terms of drainage, the property is located within two drainage basins, the Ellicott Consolidated Basin and the Telephone Exchange. Drainage basin fees would be due at time of Final Plat recordation. The applicant did submit a master development drainage plan that identified that stormwater will be conveyed to multiple full-spectrum detention ponds to mitigate their developed flows. That'll provide water quality and retention. Any questions on detention?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Trebridge.
Thank you. Yeah, I was just wondering, there seemed to be an awful lot of ponds here. So is it, and I assume it's not because of the impermeable nature of the development, it's more has to do with the land and the geology?
Correct, and also that there's two drainage basins that this is in, so it'll be draining in different areas. And this is very high level. This is what they're anticipating that it'll take. As we get further into the process, they'll fine-tune that, and it may reduce down the ponds, could increase it as well. But typically, they try to match kind of what they're anticipated, but yes, you do have two drainage basins here that flow to different directions.
And is it anticipated that some of this water will have to be diverted into a stormwater system of some sort, or will it flow off the property as natural flows?
It'll try to mimic that, the historic conditions. It will, there are some existing infrastructure there. Actually, two of those ponds were previously approved already with previous filings that Ryan mentioned. A lot on the north side with that Phase One already has some public infrastructure that is conveyed to some of these ponds, and the other ponds will do essentially the same thing.
Okay, thank you.
In terms of transportation, the master traffic impact city was submitted, identifying approximately over 30,000 average daily trips for the total development. It does provide some large-scale improvements in that traffic study. Excuse me, further analysis will be provided with subsequent traffic studies as they get more detailed and the actual layout of roadways are provided. It is anticipated that access permits will be required, specifically any connections to Highway 94. There currently is two on Springs Road and Mayberry Drive, which we anticipate will have to be updated as the development progresses. The sketch plan does show multiple roadway locations that are conceptual, with the exception of those that are already existing. Any questions on transportation?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our department notified 104 adjoining property owners for the hearings. To date, we have not had any feedback from any of those residents. I did have a couple phone calls with a few residents that were more curious, but didn't really have any issues. So as of now, I haven't heard of any formal opposition or support for this project. And that would essentially conclude the staff presentation, so unless there are any specific questions for staff at the moment, I'd like to turn it over to the applicants for their presentation.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Planning Commission. My name is Andy, pardon me, Randy. Randy Gudson. And this is Scott Souter, Director of Development. I'm the president of Mayberry Communities, and I've been working with the county for over 20 years to bring Mayberry to life, and I really appreciate your time and staff's time. Staff has really been fantastic to work with. This is a major undertaking, creating a planned community, and with all the land uses. We have a presentation, very, very briefly, just to point out that Mayberry Communities is, and this sketch plan is consistent with your master plan. And as staff just mentioned, I'm just gonna point out a couple of things focusing on the land use and the fact that this particular property is shown on the map for your master plan. In addition to being described as the type of development that the county is looking for, and the area that the county is looking for it, Mayberry specifically is outlined on the master plan. And the master plan talks about clustering. Staff talked about the different, the range of densities. This is primarily a suburban community. We also have the other land uses as requested in the, in the master plan, a mix of low, medium, and high-density housing. That's verbatim from the master plan, clustering of homes to increase the density and improve, provide open space. And so I'm just going to highlight these uses here. Again, single-family detached, single-family attached, multifamily housing, parks, open space, commercial, commercial services, and institutional. And with the primary use being single-family detached. And just pulling up from the sketch plan, the site data portion of the sketch plan, I'm gonna highlight on the next slide here. Identifying, in the site data pursuant to what your staff identified, we have a debate whether it's 4.4, 4.5, depending upon some of the math, some things that are included or not included. But in the county, in your master plan, let's see, where does it say? Well, in your master plan, it says, under the archetype for suburban communities, up to five units per acre gross density. And so that's the point I really wanted to make. And then I'm just gonna point out from, these are, again, from your master plan. I mentioned those a moment ago, I'm probably ahead of my slide because I don't want to waste your time hearing this multiple times. This is the sketch plan that staff showed, this box, staff identified as being a little hard to read at this, at this level, so we've blown it up here, made it larger, and just pointing out that we have all these land uses that are specifically requested as a goal for the suburban communities. And we're here to answer any questions. Really appreciate your time and consideration.
Great, thank you. Any questions? Anyone? Yes, Mr. Smith.
In your plan, do you have any consideration for like a fire station or emergency services of any type?
Commissioner Smith, yes, we do. We absolutely do. We have a 1.9-acre fire station designated. Is there, I'm not sure if there's a pointer here.
Yep, I see it.
You see the? Yeah, the fire station right there in the middle?
Yep.
We do. We've also identified a location for a potential middle school, or a K-8 school would be our ideal. The, that would need to be, unless Ellicott changes their desires, it would need to be a charter school. And so this is the area identified in red, that intention in our village plan is for that to be a school. But to bring in a charter school, it works a lot better if that land has an economic value for the loans that they obtain, and so that is designated as commercial just to provide that economic value, but in all of our village plans on our website, that's identified as a K-8 school, and that's absolutely our goal.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Trebridge.
Going back to what Mr. Smith just brought up about the fire station. Obviously, you've been in discussions with Ellicott about the location and such. Do they, just from my own curiosity, is there a anticipated time or certain number of units that you build that's when they would want to actually put the fire station in, or just thinking ahead about as you build out this community, at what point does the fire station become actually necessary in order to provide the timely response that's needed?
Yeah, great question, Commissioner Trebridge. Thank you. The, the Ellicott Fire District is a volunteer fire district. We are within the service timeframes from that existing fire district, so that, and that station, so it's not needed for fire service. We think it's better for the community, and as we build out, we think it'll make more sense. Candidly, I think it requires an evolution of, of the fire services and the funding for the fire services out in that area, in our immediate area. We have, you know, tried to engage with the fire district. And, and that's a little bit inconsistent. But I expect that will evolve over time as we have more rooftops, we generate more tax revenue to the district. We would like it to be, you know, consistent with the phase where it's located, is about approximately the middle of the project. So where we would have about 1,300 to 1,400 housing units in place at that time. If, if things change, we're here. We, you know, we love civic services onsite, and we'd love to have them. It's, you know, but there's a lot, a lot of people and, you know, with, with opinions that we have, we want to respect.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair. Yes, Mark Witsch.
We've heard in the past some fire stations being set up as just equipment locations. Would this be a fully served and staffed fire station, or is it just gonna be a waypoint for equipment storages getting ready for some way to come?
Okay. Commissioner Mark, I'm gonna introduce Scott Souter a moment ago. He's our Director of Development. He's gonna touch on that, but I will just provide a prelude, which is, we're not the fire district.
Right.
So the fire district's gonna need to make those decisions. We're providing an asset of the property.
Yeah, I've recently, I just wanted to point out real quickly, because I'm not sure that Randy, as, he wasn't party to these meetings, but we've, as development continues out here, we've had conversations with the fire district, recently had some conversations about one of our upcoming meetings. And during those conversations, we briefly touched on the fire station, and they're very interested in it. But as Randy indicated, there's a lot of details to be worked out. I think their desire would be, to your point, to have a full station there, but I don't think that all of the appropriate people have come together yet to really define what that looks like, how it would be funded, those sorts of things. Prelimarily, though, they're very interested in the opportunity.
And that makes sense. I just, I guess I'm, my question really should be, are we allocating enough space if they do decide to go for full service?
Exactly, yes, yes, and we are. So this particular site, it's moved around two or three different locations within that general vicinity, and there's an underlying sort of more of a master plan of that particular site that illustrates a full-service fire station, being able to be capable of fitting on that piece of property. Yep.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Yes, Mr. Smith.
I'm sorry, Mr. Barr. I'm curious about kind of the phasing and timing, and the delivery of the various housing types. I'm kind of assuming you'll go from the existing development, move back to the west, and then the delivery of the various types of housing, multifamily, and division there.
Commissioner Barr, appreciate the question. It's multifaceted, the answer is multifaceted. Part of it is anticipating the future and interest rates and and demand. Of course, we try to lead demand to product that we think a lot of times in this, in this market where there's no other product, there's not market research available to see what people are really buying, so we try to lead the market with product. We're processing now a duplex product that will have homes, you know, single-family, four-bedroom, three-bath, two-car garage homes that will price at $350,000. We think there, there's a lot of demand for that type of housing. And, and that will be coming before you later on this year. It's identified here as tract K. And that will also include our entry parks. And other areas identified near the town center will be townhomes and apartments. center will be townhomes and apartments. Apartments are heavily interest rate sensitive and, but we want to bring the product on as soon as possible. That will drive the direction of where we go, but generally we're going to be going, clearly we're going to be going from north to south. And then whether we go east or west will depend upon the product types. We'll be generally going east for additional single-family. And as we build out the business park, we are closing on our second business park parcel. We have four other parcels under contract. And, and so it will be just building out and trying to lead that demand where we have a really strong economic opportunity for people, whether they're businesses or homeowners, to have, you know, beautiful, single-family homes, duplex homes, if they're businesses, to have businesses at significant, you know, discounts to what's available in the predominant market area.
Sure. So what, what's the, like your current build pace? Are you at 50 units a year, 100 units a year?
So far, the last two years, we've been doing about 50 units a year.
Interesting.
We, we, you know, really hope to and have the capacity to build multiples of that level. One thing that we're doing that's unique is our, the first building up there is a venture we have with a company called Intellifap of Colorado where we have an automation line and we use that to produce all the framing for the homes. And in working with the PPRBD, we also have, we prefab bathrooms and we install those during the framing process. It's first for Colorado and it's, and PPRBD's been fantastic to work with us so that we can build these homes. You know, the quicker we can build them, we were able to still make a profit and sell them at a low price. And, and so we have the capacity in our factory there to build over 500 units.
So this, so part of your vision is to actually do the home construction yourselves and you sell off lots too, correct?
That's, no. We don't sell anything off. We don't, we don't bring in any other investors, just our partnership and we, we build everything. We have to sort of apprentice, we're a general contractor, but we have to sort of apprentice on the commercial buildings because of this kind of odd, even though we've built a lot of industrial buildings in other places continually. But in El Paso County, you have to be observed by a general contractor who has built other industrial buildings until they tell us we're good enough to do it ourselves here. So.
I, I think this is a, a great vision and a great project, so appreciate you.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Smith, did you have a question?
Just out of curiosity, you don't have to answer if you don't want to.
You have your mic on?
Yep, it's on. Just pointed the wrong direction. There we go. So with the name selection and all the time you've taken to do this, you've obviously put a great deal of thought into this. Is your town center going to be a tourist destination?
That's a great, great question. I hope so. In my experience, my whole career has been dedicated to large-scale community development and the communities that I've created are, become very, very well-known and they're huge attractions, not just to the residents that live there, but to people, you know, from all over because they're very unique, walkable villages that you don't find in, in new development over the last 30 years in the United States, except for my projects and a few others that Peter Calthorpe, my land planner I've worked with for 30 years, has developed, including, I forget the new name, but Stapleton. And, and when I first had this land under contract, candidly, I was so impressed with El Paso County and your planning staff back in 2005 and talking about this vision. I rented a van and did a field trip with a whole bunch of planning staff and took them up to Stapleton to meet with Peter Calthorpe. And to, so because El Paso's land use code had to change a little bit to allow this type of, of suburban town center development. And it's been fantastic working with El Paso County to, to make this happen.
Good, thank you.
Great. Any other questions or comments? All right. Thanks very much.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your time.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this item? Seeing none, anyone who'd like to speak against it? I don't see any, so we'll close the public comment. Any, just, pardon me? Oh yeah, online, anybody online? Do we have? No, thank you. Discussion? Any thoughts, anyone? All right, now entertain a motion. Ms. Fuller.
Mr. Chair, with regards to Agenda Item 5A, File SKP 236, for a sketch plan, Mayberry, I move for approval in accordance with the attached resolution with three conditions and three notations and that this item be forwarded to the Board of County Commissioners for their consideration.
Thank you.
Second.
Second by Mr. Byer. Any other comment? All right, we'll take the vote. Mr. Mark Witsch?
Aye.
Mr. Trebridge?
Aye.
Ms. Fuller?
Aye.
Mr. Whitney?
Aye.
Mr. Byers?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so this passes unanimously. That concludes our, our scheduled items. Any other comments? I understand we don't have a meeting first part of May.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, that's correct. May 1st, there is nothing on the agenda. I don't have anything on the May 15th agenda yet, but that would be the next meeting.
Okay. Anyone else have anything? Great, we'll conclude our meeting.